We are calling to order the Monday, January 27th, regular business meeting of Shakopee Public Schools Board Meeting. Sarah, could you do the roll?
Aldrich.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
McKeon.
Present.
Tomcik.
Here.
Tucker.
Here.
And Peterson.
Here. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into our agenda for this evening in the good news items, I want to take a moment to reflect and appreciate an employee in our district that passed away on December 27th. Joyce Copet began working in the school district on February 24th of 2012 as a substitute for food service at East Middle School. And she became full-time in February of 2016 at East in our food service area. Again, as I said, she passed away on December 27th. Appreciate everything that she did at our middle schools, working with our students in our food service program. And I know that she would be greatly missed. So if we could just take a moment of silence to remember her this evening, I appreciate it. Thank you. Moving on to item number four. We are Shakopee Schools, our good news items for tonight. We have two great recognitions, one being the Minnesota ACDA 910 Honor Choir Vocalist Recognition. Ten Shakopee High School choir students were selected as members of this year's Minnesota ACDA 910 Honor Choir. These outstanding vocalists were selected from over 2,000 applicants in the state of Minnesota to participate in this annual event. They will prepare music alongside honored singers from around the state and perform a final concert together on February 13th at Central Lutheran Church in Minneapolis as part of the Minnesota Music Educators Conference. So we'd like to congratulate the students tonight. And I believe the Bridgette is here?
Yeah.
And she'd like to talk a little bit about the students and what they'll be doing?
Sure.
And we have some certificates to present as well.
Great. Hi, I'm Bridgette Keenan. I'm one of the choir directors at the high school. And as mentioned, we are recognizing tonight ten students who were selected to be a part of the Minnesota ACDA 910 Honor Choir. That audition process looked like some different recordings that they had to record with us and then we submitted, including a recording of a scale sung on Soul Fudge and an Acapella recording of a folk song called Sally Gardens. And the judges were evaluating things such as tone quality, breath control, intonation, pitch accuracy, among other things. And as was noted, thousands of students across the state auditioned for this particular Honor Choir festival every year. And this year, about a little over 400 were selected. And we have ten of them. So we are just so, so proud of these singers.
Do you want to introduce them and I will come up with a certificate?
Yeah, sure. I'll just go like in order. So we have Ajay. Get your certificate. And you want to stand up here? Perfect. Yeah, this is Maggie. And Luke, up here in front. Colin is not present right now. Autumn is here. Autumn, come out up. Taylor is here. Lizbeth, come on. And Eliana. Erin.
If I could sneak in behind here, I'm going to stay on the back.
That works. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Now are they going to send happy birthday to Joe or not?
It's like Saturday, don't you remember?
Thank you. Thanks for coming. So we have, next on the agenda, another good news item. The Shakopee Education Endowment Foundation presentation of the 2019-20 Grants. Since its inception, the Shakopee Education Endowment Foundation, otherwise known as CEEF, has been making teachers' dreams come true by funding grants for innovative classroom projects. Thanks to generous donations from our community, this school year, a total of 30 grants were funded benefiting 64 district staff members and countless Shakopee students. Highlights from this year's grants, which totaled nearly $30,000, include promotion of literacy through the Grades K-5 Initiative to bring literacy into the art classroom using books, a preschool program to provide access to inclusive and diverse books and materials, to a reading partnership between Shakopee High School students and Jackson Elementary students. It also supported STEM education ranging from a 3D scanner at the middle school to elementary residency and materials for STEM problem-solving activities. In addition, new equipment in the Shakopee High School Science Department will enrich biology and chemistry classes. Here tonight, we have from the CEEF Board Kathy Bush, Jack Trimble, and Alex Lamendan. Want to come forward and talk?
Come forward, I have the table for her.
Thanks, Alex.
Just going to move it over for that group shot. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Alrighty, good evening and thank you for allowing us to attend tonight's school board meeting to provide information and updates about the Shakopee Educational Endowment Foundation, otherwise known as CEEF. My name is Alex Lamendan and I have Jack Trimble and Kathy Bush here with me. We are members of the CEEF Board of Directors. A little bit of background, CEEF is a nonprofit, private organization that is dedicated to preserving and enhancing the quality of education in the Shakopee schools by funding projects that provide innovative opportunities for our students. While contributions to CEEF go to enhancing school district programs, the foundation operates independently of the school district. District staff have the opportunity to submit written grant proposals to the foundation board, who then independently fund proposals that would best benefit our students. The 2019-2020 funding cycle is the 28th anniversary of CEEF-funded projects and activities in the Shakopee schools. Since 1991, CEEF has awarded more than 500 grants totaling nearly $400,000. This year, 30 grants were funded ranging from $137 to $2,000 and representing all schools and grade levels at Shakopee Public Schools. A total of 36 grant proposals were submitted for this round of funding, and proposals were judged on innovation and creativity, educational need, maximum student impact, detail of budget, and a clear, specific evaluation plan. Members of the CEEF Board of Directors look forward to visiting each of the classrooms, receiving a CEEF grant this year, and seeing the project in action, as well as reading the final grant report form from each of the teachers receiving the grant. Please feel free to join any of us as we visit the classrooms to see firsthand the innovative projects. To learn more about this year's funded projects, there's a booklet before you describing each project. Much thanks to Christie, who created the booklet. We do have additional information. I know Jack has some pamphlets for anybody interested with some more information about CEEF. Additional information can also be found on the CEEF website, shakopee@foundation.org, the foundation's Facebook page, and the recent and updated CEEF brochure, which is what Jack is passing out. The CEEF Board of Directors is grateful for the monetary donations provided to the foundation by district staff, community members, and local businesses. We welcome additional donations as well as adding additional board members. We are proud of the educational opportunities provided to the students of the Shakopee School District and pleased that we can play a role in offering innovative opportunities. Dr. Redmond and the members of Shakopee Board of Education, I am pleased to present a check to you this evening for $29,491 to fund 30 innovative projects designed and created by the staff at Shakopee Public Schools.
Can you endorse that and slide it through the ATM depository?
There you go.
Having been the beneficiary of more than one endowment fund back in my teaching days, I just have so much respect for the work that you people do. It's just to put the money right there where the people who are working with kids every day perceive it needs to be. And you had me at literacy.
I know I said maybe last year or previous years, some of the amounts are not exorbitant when you look at the school district budget and the amount of money that you're talking about. With most of the time, some of these amounts look small, but really, there's a very big impact because teachers are so innovative in the things that they're doing and where they're to supplement and enhance. I know what it's like to try to work without budget and so we're really appreciative of the donations that come to us and then to be able to offer this to our district staff. And they do great things with it. So Alex mentioned that we sure invite you to come along with us. We want to visit each of the classrooms now. That's something new that we're doing. We did some last year. And so we really mean that. I mean, just contact any members of CEEF if you'd like to get into the classrooms to see these in action.
I'll say right now I want to, so you know.
One of the neat things about this is that it impacts every building almost in some way, some fashion, that it's not just elementary or pre-k. It's all levels. And I think that's the beauty of this program is if you have a request and you want to do something unique in the classroom with your students, there's an opportunity for you to get some funding for that. So I would encourage all the teachers and staff to submit your grants. And I think the deadline is...
End of September?
End of September still. So as the teachers end school year, be thinking about those things. And when the school year starts, get those grants in. They really, I know as being part of CEEF in the past, a lot of time is spent looking over the grants. So it's hard, sometimes can be a very hard decision. There are a lot of cool things going on in these classrooms.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I was thinking here, we wouldn't be able to do this without donors. And if you look at our pamphlet here, I want to take special recognition to, if you look under the pounders, which is $25,000 and more, look at number one there. And it's a person there I think you all know. We much appreciate him. And I think Reggie and Lisa Bowerman are going to be missed in this community.
They are.
And their contribution to our organization has been very, very good.
Reggie's already missed here.
One other thing, if you look at the people on our board, they're all unpaid volunteers. And two of them actually are in the Shakopee Hall of Fame. Judge Rick Lewis and Kathy Bush, right behind me here. So again, we appreciate all the people on our board.
Thank you for having me, Joe. Thank you. We are going to move to item number five on the agenda, which is consideration of agenda as presented.
And I have a suggested change. We've got folks here from CFC and their programs. We've got folks here with our bonds from Baker Tilly. So my suggestion would be we take the new business, the eight, number eight items, move it ahead of number seven, the old business items. And then I would also suggest we go 8.2, then 8.3, then 8.1, just in deference to our guests. Yep. Move those ahead of the sevens.
Then they can miss out on so much.
They're certainly welcome to say after they present. And you know, I'm guessing they may.
So the change is we're moving eight to the, our new number seven.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then the order.
Yep.
Any other additions or changes to the agenda from what was presented?
I'll make a motion to accept this recommendation.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. So then moving on to the consent agenda, item number six. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right. So now we are going to go to item 8.2, the consideration to approve a resolution ratifying the award of the sale of the General Obligation Bond 2020A. And here tonight, we have Bill Manazi and Jeff Solomon from Baker Tilly to discuss this item with us. Welcome. This is Bill's first meeting in the hot seat, so.
I was actually going to start with that. Thanks for...
Well, welcome.
Yeah, thank you. I'm thrilled to be here. So, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Redmond, thank you for the opportunity to present item number 8.2, approval of a ratifying resolution on the 2020A General Obligation Bond. As Board Chair Peterson mentioned, Jeff Solomon from Baker Tilly is here as well to assist with any questions or additional support on this item, 8.2, and then the next item, 8.3 as well. So these will be fairly quick. The ratifying resolution on the 2012A is a capital facilities bond in order to finance energy savings, the energy savings program with UNESCO, that the board previously heard about. Guaranteed savings on the program through UNESCO, payment on the bond to be made through the energy savings. And as you may recall from a few weeks ago, we did have a successful sale on January 15th. The actual true interest cost that day was 2.59%, down from 2.75%, which was the estimate during the pre-sale summary in December. The district and certainly Baker Tilly worked very hard on a negotiated sale regarding the 2020A Capital Facilities Bond. With that, take any questions that you may have.
No, other than, as Bill mentioned, this was a negotiated sale. And in order to move forward with that, I believe this on December 9th, you approved a resolution allowing Superintendent and your Director of Finance to approve that negotiated sale, which occurred above mid-January. So tonight is really a formality for you as a board to act on the sale that has occurred. And as Bill related, it was a very good sale and came in with a little higher premium than what we had estimated. And it allowed us to reduce the par value that was being sold. So it was good news.
Any other questions?
And this is strictly to do with UNESCO, nothing else, correct?
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
We should probably read that. Do a roll call.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve a resolution ratifying the award of the sale, determining the form and details, authorizing the execution, delivery, and registration, and then providing for the payment of General Obligation Capital Facilities Bond Series 2020A. And we will have a roll call, Sarah?
Aldrich?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Tomcik?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
And Peterson?
Yes.
So then we will move on to 8.3, which is the consideration to approve a resolution stating the intent of the school board to issue General Obligation Bonds 2020B. This resolution states the intent of the school board to issue General Obligation Bonds to finance projects included in the district's approved 10-year facility plan. Obligating the district to be bound by and to use the provisions of Minnesota Statute Section 126(c)55 to guarantee the payment of the principal and interest on the bonds will be presented to the board. Bill?
And that's a very reasonable summary. I guess the only thing I would add, also referred to, or would I refer to as facilities maintenance bonds. And our purpose is financing long-term facilities maintenance, LTFM, and health and safety projects across existing district facilities. So not talking about anything new here, existing district facilities. We did talk earlier today. The schedule is for competitive proposals on that issuance to be received February 24th in the morning, I think 10:30 specifically. And again, feel very comfortable working with Baker Tilly on facilitating the sessions.
I was just going to say, could you give some examples of what these projects will turn into? You've been here for a couple of weeks, right?
Well, I was going to say, I wanted to make sure that I've got this right. Long-term facilities maintenance, so we're doing maintenance projects, remodeling, replacement of current things. We're also using our existing levy. So there's not, and we're using the money that's already being collected from that levy to finance the bonds so that we can do larger-scale maintenance projects across the district. And this summer, Sweeney and Easter on the docket. There's roof repairs, HVAC system, all those things that if you want a building to function well over a long period of time, you've got to take care of, you know, the inner workings or the guts of the building, if you will. And so it's things like that. Rather, you know, and so there's no additional levy. We're using the existing revenue stream that we have to finance that, to do larger projects. And either of you care to add to that?
No. Chair Peterson and Superintendent Redmond is really taking all the good information.
Sorry, Jerry.
Tonight, with tonight's information, what this does is actually allows us to start the process of putting out an official statement. And as Bill mentioned, this will be a competitive sale, which will take place in February. Superintendent Redmond mentioned this is not going to create, this is done with existing revenue sources that the district already has. So it will not increase in tax payments to your local community, but it will allow you to move forward with some of your larger-scale projects. And again, it's an excellent time to be going out for bond sales. So the timing of this, I think, is very good. And it still allows you to use your annual long-term facility revenue. You're only using about half of it for these bonds. And the other half will allow you to designate for ongoing projects.
For those who didn't see the whole presentations in the fall, I don't know if everybody here did. But for those watching at home and whatnot, I mean, this is a great, great way to get caught up. We're never going to be fully caught up with LTFM. You're never up to speed. But so it's great to be able to handle bigger projects sooner. And some of our buildings, it's hard to imagine, but SunPath is what, 24 years old now? And a lot of us still consider that to be a new building, right? Yeah, it was 1995, 1996, something like that. I mean, it's, some of those, I mean, the warranty on a roof is 20 years. So that's already past its build. So I think this is great. I think it's a great proposal. I think it's a great opportunity for us and a great way to bring all of our facilities up to speed.
And I think it's well-planned. You know, there's, moving forward, it's what's going to get done and when it's going to get done and priorities and things like that. So it's, I think, very thorough in the planning.
And I might add, they've tried to take projects that are bigger projects. And sometimes you go, well, why would you bow to do that? Well, if you do them piecemeal rather than all at once, you're bringing a company out, they've got to set up what they call staging and that, and you might be paying for that multiple times. Where now, if they, you know, if they can come out and do it all at once, there's an efficiency. There's an economy of scale in doing the work. But also, you're not paying that travel time, that staging, that setup. And I would argue, in some things, especially roofs and some of that, the quality of work's going to be better if it's done as one comprehensive type plan rather than over a period of time and sometimes by different contractors and even with bid laws and the like, so.
It's a great enhancement and improvement over past methodology to do this, like you're saying. Take advantage of that without adding a tax burden on the tax charge. So it's a win-win.
And I've used this when we talked about long-term facilities maintenance. We were lobbying the legislature. To me, it's a little bit, this is an age test. If you remember this commercial, you're above a certain age. It's the old Fram oil filter commercials. You can pay me now or pay me later. So you've never seen that commercial, have you, Ashley?
No, I haven't.
It was a good one. But it's the logic of doing good maintenance and, you know, taking care of, you know, taking care of your facilities. That, you know, if you put that off for too long, the expenses go way up. So sorry for those of you who knew what I was talking about.
So before we move forward, I will entertain a motion to adopt a resolution stating the intention of the school board to issue General Obligation Bonds to finance projects included in the district's approved 10-year facility plan, obliging the district to be bound by and to use the provisions of Minnesota Statute Section 126(c)55 to guarantee the payment of the principal and interest on the bonds.
Aye, so move.
Second. Any further discussion? And I believe this one has a roll call as well. Sarah?
Aldrich?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Tomcik?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
And Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you for coming.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Move up in your agenda as well.
So we are back to item 8.2 on the agenda of our new business. Sorry, 8.1. See, I may be confused by my own language. 8.1, which is an informational presentation by Central Family Center Administrator and a couple of staff members there on the pyramid model that is... Aren't you? Ah, come on. You know, if you wouldn't have said something, then we probably wouldn't have let it slide.
Welcome.
Yes, Kate.
Like to have you come sit down.
So we learned a little bit about the pyramid model when we went through the Citizens Facility... Ambassador, you did a presentation. And then we toured, Julie did a great job of giving us an overview of... a great job of giving us an overview of, some of us that were part of that committee, an overview of the pyramid model and the importance of it, and which led us to write an article in the paper to educate people a little bit more. Here you are tonight to educate us.
Yes, we are very grateful, grateful for the article, and especially for the opportunity to be here tonight to present the work of the Central Family Center, especially around the pyramid model. So to Superintendent Redmond, Board Chair and Board Members, again, thank you very much. We're pleased to have several of our Pyramid Implementation Committee members here tonight as well, Katie, Jaren, and Steph, who seem too shy to come up and say anything else. But we are very grateful for your presence tonight as well. We'll go ahead, and I'll let our panel members introduce themselves. First of all, I'm Julie Ritter, and I am the Central Family Center Administrator.
And I'm Courtney Olson, I am the School Psychologist for CFC.
And I'm Sally Stack, I'm the School Social Worker.
We'll get right into it. There's our implementation team. One of the things that the implementation team told us to do is to make sure that we had a wide representation of all the early childhood programs represented at CFC. So you'll see early childhood special education, we have early childhood family education, ECFE, our preschool, stepping stones, as well as other key members, our social worker and school psychologist of this team. So first of all, what is the pyramid model? A familiar phrase to many is that multi-tiered framework, and it is. It's about providing a level-one tier that is universal, everyone receives support in addition to multiple tiers to help those who may need additional support. Its goal is around social competence, but also improving challenging behaviors in young children. So the model emphasis is program-wide. It's about building relationships, it's about making sure that the environments that we're providing for students are supportive, it's about intentionally teaching social skills. And Courtney and Sally will be going more in-depth as to what that means, as well as those individualized interventions for students, both tier-one, universal, everyone receives, tier-two, for those who need a little bit more, and then tier-three, for those that need even just a little bit more support. How does this work align with what the district is doing? First of all, it aligns very well with the world's best workforce goal, number one, which is all children ready for school. Our work in social-emotional skill development helps to ensure that at least the students that we serve are reaching kindergarten with those skills in place so that they can be successful in the classroom. It also lends itself very well to alignment with the K-12 efforts around PBIS, the Positive Behavior Intervention Support Systems, which is a term common to the district and hopefully to you all as well. The pyramid model is not unique to Shakopee. It is hosted by a number of different sites within the state of Minnesota. This just shows just a brief little map about the districts that are currently implementing the pyramid model, as well as throughout the United States. So why is having, why is the pyramid model important? First of all, it is a model based on research. It shows that children have better social skills and less problem behavior if they are in an environment that supports the pyramid model and pyramid model classrooms. It is also about teachers implementing best practices. And these best practices aren't only research-based, but they're provided training and coaching to help support them in the implementation of those practices. The pyramid model provides these elements. It provides teachers with tools and strategies to promote and support that positive behavior. It's about data-based decisions, which we will give more information about how we do that at CFC. Again, it's about those evidence-based, research-based interventions and practices, and it's about matching the intensity of the behaviors with the intensity of the intervention. Again, tier-two and tier-three and tier-one interventions. But then, it's about a program-wide approach, that we support the social-emotional development of young children to decrease those challenging behaviors in multiple different ways throughout all of our program areas. So, moving on to the details about what this looks like as Central Family Center.
So we are currently in year four of our implementation. We received a five-year grant from Minnesota Centers of Excellence, and we had, prior to this, gone through the PBIS training as well, some years before that, and tried to kind of modify it to fit in our age level, with some success, but it was hard to sustain it, and so this is very specific to early childhood and has been very successful and exciting for us. So when we look at the pyramid model and the framework, there's a bunch of different components that we've been able to put into place over the past three and a half years. First being the database decision-making that Julie mentioned. So we are collecting data at the student, classroom, and building level. We have created a scope and sequence of social-emotional skills, teaching, and activities that goes throughout the entire school year. We coordinate that with parent resources for all of our families, as well as a social skills curriculum that we have in place for all three, four, and five-year-olds. And then, we have consistent behavior expectations for every area within the building, training for all staff, peer coaching for all classroom teams, and then a calm-down corner, which goes along with self-regulation skills in every single classroom. And so component number one, we give the training, and this is something that's really kind of unique to pyramid model, I think. We train all staff, so certified and non-certified, related service providers. Everyone in the building receives extensive training, a full day of training on tier-one, another day on tier-two, and two days on tier-three. And so they're learning very, it's not just broad, it's very specific things. So tier-one, things that we can use for all students, like environmental supports, effective transitions, visual schedules, routines, all of those kinds of things. When we get into tier-two, it's more specific teaching strategies. So how are we teaching friendship skills? How are we teaching kids about emotions and how you manage those? How do we teach social problem-solving? And then tier-three, like Julie mentioned, is very specific to those more intense, persistent behaviors. So what do you do when you have a child in your classroom who's really struggling with that? What's the process to get support? How do you collect data? How do you work with families? And again, even with those skills, our parent professionals, everyone in the building is receiving that training, not just the teaching staff. And that's been really powerful for us to have everyone on the same page with that.
So on top of the training that all the staff go through, we have seven of our staff members who are peer coaches. This is aside from admin. We go into the classrooms, they undergo training, they have to pass a test, and then we are assigned one to two classrooms that we coach. We're not just coaching the teacher, we're going in and coaching the parent professionals also. Everybody's got input on what we want to do. When, a couple slides ago, we talked about all the training, that's kind of the breakdown of what we're looking for in classrooms, and we ask teachers what they want to work on. And as coaches, we support them through observations. Perhaps we are making material for them, videotaping them, role modeling, helping them set up whatever they need to meet those skills in their classroom.
And our team that's with us does include our coaches back there.
Yes, they're all with us. So most of us are here. We also have a state coach, so a pyramid model provide a state coach to us. It has, she has kind of backed off because next year will be her last year, although she'll still be accessible for questions, but she is there helping us along the way as well. So quite unique in that we have a lot of support. We're not saying to teachers, here's the skills we're looking for, go and do it. It's like, we're going to embrace you, we're going to help you, what do you want to work on? How can we get you to where we all want to be?
So database decision-making is a really big part of pyramid model, and we collect three different types of data. So the first kind of primary tool that we use, there's two versions of it called the teapot and the tippy-toes, which is a very cute name for the early childhood, for the two-year-olds. But they're both standardized tools, they're observation-based for a classroom. So the coaches, we go in in pairs, and we use this tool to look for all the different indicators that the teachers and teaching teams are working on implementing. And so we do it twice a year, fall and spring, until teachers and teams are able to meet fidelity, until they've shown that they're demonstrating all of those indicators at a certain level or higher. And if they aren't doing it yet in one area, that's just an area that we work on more goal-setting, and it's not a negative thing, it just identifies areas to continue to improve. So we do it twice a year, and then once teachers are consistently meeting fidelity, we back off our coaching, and we continue, we as a team have decided to continue doing it once a year, just for making sure that we sustain this program as we go on into the future. The BOQ is another instrument. We collect data just on our implementation team to help us identify areas that we could continue to improve as a building. And then the final one is called the BURs, or the Behavior Incident Report. This is kind of like our early childhood version of like an office referral for older students. And so we collect data on individual challenging behaviors that happen in classrooms. We use it across the entire building, and it's on iPads or laptops. It takes about one to two minutes to enter a BUR, it's very quick. And then it provides us with a bunch of data, and so our next slide shows just a little, like a snapshot of what you might see. We are able to pull data from the system, and the data system we use is provided for us by pyramid model, and we will be able to continue to access it once the grant is done. And we can pull it for a student, for a classroom, or for the entire building. And so, for example, like the chart on the left there, the graph, is showing by activity or routine for one classroom. So in that classroom, we can see there were fifteen incidents during the bathroom routine. So that tells us, hmm, something's happening with that routine where they're having a hard time, what can we make a change? Look a little closer, we can pull out individual student data with that. The other one, again, is type of incidence, so what type of behaviors are we seeing? So it really helps with problem-solving, system-wide, but also for individual students when we have referrals and we think of those NTSS and the different levels there. Very useful for working with parents too, and helping them see what's happening in the classroom.
It was mentioned the scope and sequence earlier, and what we're basically saying is, we want kids to leave at the end of fourth, at the end of their four-year-old program, if they continue through and forth, with certain skills. So to break it down, we have a scope and sequence, and we present that to teachers via coaches meeting. It's a temper, here's our scope and sequence, what are the skills and activities that we want to focus on with the kids this month. For example, I kind of pulled up October, we're teaching and practicing recognizing yours and others' emotions, calming strategies and the steps and calm-down corners in each classroom. I jumped to February, and we're focused on friendship skills, bucket filling. We have a caring cub, a little stuffed animal that goes around the classrooms to reinforce. We also have a reward party for meeting certain goals within the building. So we break it down for teachers, but we also then link it to videos that they can watch, to games. We have a pyramid model closet that incorporates games and books and all kinds of dramatic play kits that they can use to support all the skills that we are trying to teach. I think it's overwhelming for teachers sometimes to say, here's what we want you to do in the classroom. Instead, we embrace them by coaching them, providing different things, and continuing to check in to see how they're doing. We also have resources for parents, and I think Courtney mentioned that earlier, we have a bulletin board on each floor, each level of our building, and whatever the theme is for the month, we provide sixteen hours for parents on that topic. I'm trying to think of what this month's, I put them up every month, but next month we'll be on friendship skills.
Setting routines at home, or how to handle anger tantrums.
Yep, identifying emotions, how to deal with emotions.
And they can be shared out by like CSO, or email, or other methods as well.
Yes. Parents, teachers do a wonderful job of getting some of that information out, what they're doing in the classroom, and all our resources. It also aligns with the social skills curriculum that we have.
That's next. So our social skills curriculum is called We Thinkers. This is not directly associated with pyramid model, it's a separate curriculum that we have chosen to implement as part of the bigger framework, especially that tier-one. So every student receives this curriculum.
Three and four-year-olds, yeah.
Yep, so it's for our preschoolers, and it is one of the most fun and kind of visible parts of pyramid model in our building. It's been one of the most powerful pieces for parents. I think they get really excited and really involved in this. And so it's a program or a curriculum we piloted in our full-day classrooms our very first year, and then this is our third year now implementing it throughout the building. So we have weekly lessons that Sally and I go in and teach, they're storybooks, the kids in the storybooks are preschool-aged children, preschool kindergarten. And so each one is around a concept or a general kind of skill that we're teaching, and after the story, we do a large group activity, and then we provide teachers with a list of about three to five different activities that they can then do throughout the week or the next couple of weeks to reinforce the concept that we're teaching, and they can just choose right from there. We're there to help them with that if they're not sure what to do. There are parent letters that go home that go along with the topics we're teaching. We have five main concepts that we teach to everyone, and then five additional that we teach to our four-year-olds. And the five main concepts are really around skills that are very important for kindergarten, so how to be part of a group, we call it following the group plan, how to use whole-body listening, thinking with your eyes, looking around you, taking in your environment, being attentive to other people and what's happening. The idea that we all have thoughts and feelings, using your thought bubble, we see a lot of thought bubbles in our buildings. So some of that vocabulary, it sounds a little odd at first, but it's been really powerful for a lot of kids, and a lot of parents have told us they start using it at home as well. So that's been unheard of.
Some of that We Thinkers language we use in our building-wide expectations, I think this aligns very well with PBIS in that we have building-wide expectations, very much focused on what we want to see, not what we don't want kids to do, no running, no, you know, what we want. The body in the group is one of our We Thinkers lessons, when we're walking down the hall, we don't want kids scattering all over, want your bodies in the group, not too close, not too far. We do a lot of emotions.
We do a lot of emotions.
Also, Whole Body Listening is a whole book that we do, and we talk about what it looks like and break it down. When we talk about preschool, it really need to break it down. Whole-body listening makes sense to us, but when you're three and four years old, we need to break it down. Thinking with your eyes, I better pay attention to what's going on, oops, everybody's working on something else and I'm not. It's really, they're in their nice lessons. But anyway, we have all these building-wide expectations around the building, again, much like PBIS. We teach the skills, we make sure that they're in the bathrooms, the gym, the cafeteria. When I'm in there coaching and observing, I notice teachers are talking about, okay, we're going into the hallway, what are the expectations, and they kind of go through them. It's common language that even parents visiting us in ECFE classes or in the building can see. Any adult can jump in and support the behaviors.
And then we also teach emotional regulation skills. So we teach all about emotions, all the different feelings that young children can have. We teach that all feelings are okay, but there are different ways that you can express those feelings. And so we teach specific strategies to regulate or manage those, and they are appropriate to the age. So breathing strategies like smell the flower, blow out the candle, rainbow breathing, bubble breathing, all these different things that we can try, tuck-or-turtel technique. And then we've established a calm-down space in every single classroom in the building in addition to our sensory rooms. We have larger sensory rooms for kids who need a little bit more support, but every teacher has a space that they can have kids go to when they need that chance to calm down and regulate. And it's not taught as a negative space, it's something you go to just when you need to take that break.
Another thing that's unique, and again, I wish all kids who are going into kindergarten in Shakopee could experience some of these, we teach problem-solving. The idea behind that is, we have problems every day, most of them are very small. One of our We Thinkers lessons is the size of the problem. We have a lot of small problems. But we teach kids how to problem-solve a lot of their problems so that eighteen kids aren't running to the teacher. And as a coach, I actually helped one of our, we have kind of some standard posters that you see up there, but some of the teachers have personalized them, so some of the kids are on them, so they can identify with the kids. It breaks it down, what's my problem? Think, 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 what are some solutions? Solutions, part of them, there's key rings with different solutions underneath. Kids are taught to, okay, what are my solutions? They can go through them. I can share, I can ask politely, I can, one of our We Thinkers, take our idea and let it go, take my idea and your idea and put them together. They can walk through it, one of them also asked a teacher. But it gives them really good skills. We have found that most of our four-year-olds leaving at the end of the year are able to independently resolve problems. Wouldn't that be nice if they could go into kindergarten with those skills?
Sometimes they call it a home for adults.
Can we go back?
I might need to audit these questions.
End up here and at the end.
And we do share that with parents too, so that they can have copies of those to use at home.
So because of the dedicated work of not only these individuals, the individuals that are behind us, and, but all the staff of the Central Family Center, they have been recognized statewide and even a little nationally for the work that they have done in the pyramid model. So the classrooms were videotaped extensively last year, and those videos are now part of the statewide training modules and materials that are used. And so we, yes, have been noticed, noticed there, that... That's, and very fun, fun to see their work being viewed in that way. The team has been asked to present at the state implementation retreat for three years in a row and actually to do some extensive training because of their expertise on the Pyramid Model through their implementation. And we get requests from especially our metro districts to come and visit us to see the Pyramid Model in practice, especially for those who are considering that as part of the model that they would like to implement in their building as well. We get many comments from our parents and staff about what we do and we're not going to read these at all, but in a nutshell, what it says is that our teachers have very much appreciated having these tools available to them. The coaching piece has been very important to the fidelity of implementation of the Pyramid Model. So, having that support has made a difference, not only for the way they view challenging behaviors in the classroom, seeing them as something that just needs to be, that we can address, that we can take care of, giving them the skills or giving them the skills to do that. But also for our students, especially giving them the socially-emotional skills that they need to be successful in kindergarten. But we also hear from parents who say that they are using this at home and they hear their children using these words on the playground with other children. We've heard stories as well as, as well as with their siblings.
I might add one comment because I was the one that reached out to a few parents on getting feedback. And the comments that stand out on both of them was, it has changed our family dynamics because it is utilized in the home. Like you said, it would be nice to go back and, and they're all skills we need. And it helps use common language. I think common language is a really good thing.
And it helps all of our students, from students that may have more special needs and need some additional assistance to students that don't. It's really benefiting everyone.
The two students that I did get feedback from a parent are generalized students who we don't really, that don't stand out in our classrooms, but it greatly impacted their development.
So, we have some things that we need to consider as we want to continue to provide this as a model for our building and that's ways to sustain after the grant ends. The grant has been decreasing each year anyway, so it's kind of preparing us for that. We're already thinking about budget-wise. What are the pieces of this model that we need to make sure that we are targeting funds in order to continue? What are those most important pieces that will need a budget, budget support to continue? We know that we want to be able to continue coaching for our staff and how we will do that in the future, as well as making sure that we're using the data that we're being provided to make important decisions about how we implement the model in the building and support our students, making better use of our data. And then, to find ways to share it with our community and our K-12 colleagues who we would very much like to know about the work that we're doing at the Central Family Center.
There is a first-grade teacher in the district who is using We Thinker pretty often because it just really gave us gifts.
Questions?
I have a question. If I'm understanding this correctly, some of your coaches are classroom teachers too?
Special education teachers.
Right.
We do have, first of two, we have a classroom teacher.
I'm just wondering how they're released from their classroom, how that works?
She is part-time, so she doesn't.
Oh, I see. So, she can do classroom teaching, part-time.
Yeah, correct. So, it's people who have some flexibility in their schedules to be able to support the coaching as well as our part-time staff.
And we have had some, we've had some substitute teachers, like for our special education staff that are coming in first, like when we do the big team assessment and those things. But otherwise, we do a lot of the coaching before and after school when the teams are available, so.
I have a couple of questions. A couple of things that came to mind. You mentioned that you're in year four or five. What have you noticed from year one to current, halfway through maybe year four, that has changed, just not necessarily with the students, but also with the staff and the training that you've done? What, what are some of the milestones or the progress that you've seen that has, that you know that this is working?
I kind of want to turn to you. Can I turn to you?
And then, I have an observation as someone who is coming in new as well, but I'll let these guys answer that question first.
I have something in mind. Yeah, I think one of our biggest challenges was just getting all staff on board initially. Oh, we have a wonderful staff, but it's a very overwhelming thing to look at all these different components in year one. And so, there was some resistance. It's a lot of new and different things. So, I think the first year or two, that was challenging. And now, I really feel that everyone's very on board, very enthusiastic and really passionate about it. I mean, we have coaches. Everyone stayed on. Every coach we have has stuck with it since the first year. We've had quite a few administrative changes and our team has really stuck with it through these four years. And so, I think that's been exciting to see. And now, just in the building, these practices are just becoming natural. So, people don't have to work as hard at it. Those things that first you really have to remind yourself and set the goals and make yourself do, teachers tell me like, oh, I'm not even thinking about it now because now it's just become part of my practice and become so much simpler. So, that's what I've noticed.
And even, I'm coaching a team that's met fidelity, so it's not very often, but they, I'm still available to them. And they're even taking it even farther with introducing zones of regulation and some other things because they have just seen the changes in their classroom and behavior supporting kids. And parents are looking for more as well.
And I think what I see as someone who's come new into, into the building, what I have observed is the dedication of staff to try. I mean, they have a significant toolbox to pull from of different intervention strategies and their willingness to, to meet those challenging behaviors, to try different things, to be coached to, to do new things. Whereas in, in other settings that I've been in, it's been special ed referral, special ed referral, special ed referral. It's like, nope, make sure everyone has gotten that Tier One, the Tier One education, but then, what's our next step? What are we going to try next? Let's investigate that behavior. What are we going to do next? That's not working. What are we going to do next? And I see, I just see real commitment to that process.
Awesome. That's impressive. I have another question. The teapot and tibetos? Is that information for the teacher or is it information for parents too? Is it shared with parents?
It's not just the teachers and parents.
Okay. Okay. So, there is a time when that is shared with parents and explained to them about their child? Or am I seeing it?
So, the teapot would be more like a classroom assessment. Yep. So, more for the staff. The BURs though, the individual ones, we do use those with parents, yes. So, those, if, especially if we have a lot of concerns about behaviors, you know, Sally or I might meet with the parent and the teacher and we might pull out those graphs and really look and say, boy, this is where we started this intervention. Let's take a look. Did we see increase or decrease in the behavior? So, we definitely use that. The teapot and tibetos, not as much, although we have discussed wanting to share more with parents, like a general assessment of, you know, this percentage of our classrooms have now met fidelity on the tools because I don't know that we've communicated that as well as we could.
And really, those are looking at the environment, not only the implementation of strategies, but the, the environment, the culture of the environment. Is it providing basis for positive relationships with students? You know, are some of the things that are, are being looked at? It's all of those elements that, that are part of that classroom evaluation.
I have one other question. Do you see the positive behavior and interventions course of PBIS being impacted favorably as a result of this program? Or is it too early to tell because it's so early yet into the introduction?
At the start, is it the students that come from, go from Central Family to the elementaries?
Correct. I mean, are, are you seeing that you, students that are going from Central into the elementary schools are better skilled at coping with certain situations? And are the elementary schools making any connection to this program that they may have gone through or?
I hope so.
Yes.
I do think it connects very well. I mean, our students are entering the elementary schools. They know what it means to have behavior expectations. They know what it means to, you know, meet those, to demonstrate, to practice. They've been taught all these skills throughout curriculum, but some, we're still working on that connection to really what.
I think we hear some anecdotal information about that. We don't have any like data that says these students have performed better in a PBIS model because of what they received at Central Family Center, but we do hear anecdotal information from teachers, especially about the language of the We Thinkers curriculum and the Pyramid Model that the students do bring that up into kindergarten and then staff wonder where it comes from. And then, they'll question. And then, they'll question what's happening. But that is something that we want definitely, yeah, want to work on is that connection.
So, it'd be nice to have some more formal dialogue.
Yes.
Yeah. It's a simplistic common language. I think kindergarten teachers would embrace it.
Yeah, it would be interesting to see what the parallel path is and see the difference.
I have a question, but I have a comment. I feel like I just walked down memory lane. So, thank you for that, just thinking of Brody and all these moments. And I know personally, you all are doing fabulous things, so thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you for your support.
I might need a few of those things back.
Yeah, I would say everything she said except for Catlin for Brody. See a couple of Catlin's former teachers. Just a wonderful experience with the ECSE group and just overall. Can't say enough great things about all the work you're doing. And this is fantastic as a framework.
Very impressive.
We're really excited about it.
They are passionate.
Very passionate about it.
Well, I was going to say, thank you, first of all, for presenting tonight. That was fantastic, but I would say even more importantly, thank you for the work you're doing with this each and every day. And I'm very proud of you and keep up with the, the real good work, so it's appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Bravo. I think we are back to, back to old business. Item seven, under, under that, we have seven point one, consideration to approve the Takata Learning Center and District Office leases.
Yeah. Sarah, would you put up, kind of get that overview and then a, what do we call that? The executive summary, I think?
Sure.
If you would. Pleased to report, we've, we've had an ongoing kind of negotiation learning process. A representative from Takata Real Estate Advisors, Corey Whitbeck, has done great work on behalf of the district. And I think the results of those conversations and negotiations have created leases that I'm very, very comfortable recommending for approval. We've got an overview. I won't read all of this. If you scroll down a little bit, just kind of stuff. That's what we, those are our current situation is the top there. District Office on the left, Takata on the right. And if you kind of pause right there, you compare the, the renewal rates, the net rent in the two new leases are six dollars per square foot. We'll talk a little bit about that later. We have the ability to renew each of these leases with three-year options at the end. The district office lease is for five years. The Takata lease is, or sorry, the district office lease is for three years initially here. The Takata is for five years. We do have the ability. We did have these leases vetted by a law firm that specializes in leases and real estate matters. And we have the ability to opt-out annually should we, should we have that desire. There's some landlord work included. And then, Sarah, if you would go to that next page, the summary, I think Corey Whitbeck did a, did a great job of writing this on our behalf. He'd had this conversation many times. You know, people sometimes wonder, you know, why do you lease? And, and yep, there's, there's some, you know, there's pluses and minuses. I think in this case, I am very, very comfortable saying, you know, from the district perspective, the big picture, pluses far outweigh the minuses. You know, we carry a burden of paying property taxes that would otherwise be avoided if we own the facilities. But the leasing provides significant flexibility to grow, shrink, or eventually vacate. The spaces are being used very well currently, both for the district office and Takata Learning Center. We also, you know, it, it's not our building. We're, we're renters, so the capital costs of doing some of these things, we, we work, you know, if it's something we desire, we work with them to, you know, to pay for that over time in our lease. And I think the last part of that paragraph is really important. The proposed rents are very favorable. You know, looking at kind of this area shocked the area. Office space rents typically in the twelve to fourteen dollars per square foot. Again, ours is six. And fourteen to twenty for retail. And actually, the rates for unimproved warehouse space, meaning no air conditioning, things like that, go for kind of four fifty to five dollars per square foot. So, I think we're getting a very fair rate. And, you know, we're getting improved spaces that meet our needs. As mentioned there, a little bit above warehouse rates, significantly below, you know, the initial rates for the original lease. And then, so Takata Real Estate Advisors and myself, we would recommend proceeding and finalizing and executing the negotiated leases. I'm happy to answer questions before you consider approval.
Questions?
Every year, we can. We have the ability, it would be in our, we fund, how we fund our lease levy is the language. If you choose not to provide lease levy funding for this, then that opens up the right to exit the lease. Now, if we did an agreement, you know, to do some improvements or whatever, we still have some obligation to pay for that, just, you know, as you're a tenant anywhere and if somebody puts some costs in, you have to pay for those. But at this point, we don't have any of those hanging over our head, so.
And is it still, are we in agreeance that they will do some maintenance in the parking lot and a few other?
Yeah, if you scroll back up, I skipped, yeah, they've got, yeah, towards the bottom there, they're going to do some exterior painting. I'm working to see if we can't get the part of the district office painted red and black. You know, I like that. It's my favorite color right there. But yeah, you've got parking and roof repair in 2021 and there's some deadlines and, and we have some, you know, we have legal recourse should that, should that not be done.
Yeah, I was really glad to see that, that, you know, if that doesn't happen, there is a recourse and we can still do things right. Especially when it comes to the parking lot, something needs to be done.
Yeah, and we have, and it's a unique situation. And I don't know if people, the entire Townsquare Mall has three owners.
Yeah.
And so, I don't know how the parking lot is sort of divided amongst the three. So, it's, you know, our landlord could be doing everything perfectly and somebody else's landlord might be neglecting part of the parking lot. But I know the landlord that we work with has, you know, they have every intent to honor that and do that. They've been, you know, they've been good to work with, so.
And is the handicap entrance going to be repaired?
Tell me, tell me which one?
The one coming into the door.
We're talking the door? Yeah. I was unaware that that had a problem.
Yeah, it hasn't worked.
Well, let's get that fixed. Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions, discussion?
I just think this makes a lot of sense. We talked about on the, on the, what's in the Community Facilities Task Force, right? And that, it came up frequently, the, why are we leasing? Why are we leasing? And it's a good question. It's a responsible question, right? And I think we might share, we just shared about the costs being what they are and the functionality versus what it would be to add this space or Takata to other existing spaces. That is certainly something that makes a lot of sense. This is a good common sense solution. And as Paul alluded to, gives us the options to opt-out if we hypothetically free up a facility and want to repurpose it. But otherwise, it's, you know, it's high-functioning space.
Is there any cost opting out?
No. Only if we do the improvements.
And it actually, for the district office, it went from nine fifty to six. This one, okay. That's, that's great. That's just. How much has the actual cost been for the operations and taxes? Any idea?
I don't have that off the top of my head. That's something we can, I look at Bill and I go like this, we can get that too. Yeah. Really good at doing it.
I know it all depends. Could have a year without snow and have a year like last year, so it, I know it depends.
It does, and we've, you know, we've looked at that and, you know, the big picture is I do think this is good value for the money. And, you know, and we'll get you kind of that specifics if that's of interest. But I don't have that up, I'd rather not misspeak, and I know I don't have that off the top of my head.
Yeah, as Paul said, if we have, if we have an annual option without any cost, that's great.
We do.
And I think the spaces is set up very well for what we use it for. I think it's, to me, it's an over here. Especially with the annual opportunity to opt out, we still need to do that. Any further comments or discussion? Then we have a, made a motion to approve the leases for Takata and the district office.
So moved.
Joe, second. Angela, any further discussion on the topic? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
If I could just say, Corey Whitbeck wanted to be here this evening, but they're celebrating his daughter's 18th birthday, and so they were traveling, and I'd said that obviously takes precedence over this. And they had kind of a special once-in-a-lifetime trip, and so he's been away.
Well, I thank Mike and everyone involved in negotiating the leases and putting Shakopee District in the best foot forward that we can with, with the owners and working through a few hoops. But job well done to everyone involved, because I know that it's been something that's been in the works for a while.
Yeah, thank you. I learned more about leases than I ever thought I would know, so.
Okay. Moving on to 7.2, the consideration to approve a resolution for the sale of district property. This is back in front of us. Once again, our emergency, or not emergency, but our special meeting that we had in December, we thought that this property was gonna be sold, this did happen, so now it's back in front of us with the changing of the guard on the board. So. I don't know, Mike, is there anything you want to add to what we already probably know?
No, we'll see if we, if we assign the right members of the board and see how you do on Wednesday. This was, the closing was delayed, and the closing agent, you know, we had passed a resolution in December. They want the people in the specific roles of board chair and clerk called out by name in a resolution, and then a roll call vote on that resolution, just to make sure, kind of, you know, that's their requirement for closing. It makes sense. I apologize, you know, for that inconvenience. But everybody, you know, my sense on this matter is both sides of this equation, seller and buyer are working hard to get things done and get them done the right way. I know we've had a couple setbacks. I am cautiously optimistic that the whatever time is the charm, this Wednesday, so.
I hope so.
I do too.
So is there, do I have to read this part of the resolution then, or are we?
I, I think. I think we're okay if.
So basically, what we're doing is we're changing the chair and the clerk since those positions have changed since December. So those names have been changed to our current officers on the board in those positions. That's basically what has changed. So I believe, Sarah, we need to have a roll call to, I guess we need a motion first and then?
Motion.
Second.
And Matt, any further discussion on this? Everyone keep your fingers crossed.
I was gonna say.
All right. No further discussion, then all in favor? Oh, we have to do a roll call.
Do it again. Aldrich?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Tom, Tom Zicks?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
And Peterson?
Yes.
I believe it's interesting, now that you do that location, we've not gotten that updated yet.
It's only between like 4:00 and 6:00 a.m. every other Tuesday or something.
3:00 p.m. It's set for 3:00 p.m. Christine and Paul are on board at 3:00 p.m. They're on board on.
Calendar's blank. So it's gonna happen. All right.
First text out.
On item 7.3, and this is to approve the 2020 committee membership and liaison assignments for the school board. We reviewed a draft, made some adjustments to it at the retreat on January 11. And those should be reflected on the information provided. Any further comments, questions, concerns before we proceed with the approval of these? One of the things that I will say is, I know that Sarah's done a great job of trying to come up with a template for meeting minutes as well as agendas, so they're all consistent. And also developing a, like a pository for all of the meeting information that everyone will have access to, including the cabinet.
That sounds great.
And that's, that's gonna be awesome. So we can all keep track of what happened at the meeting if we weren't able to attend or we're not on that committee. Just gives us more awareness instead of waiting until this meeting or calling somebody on that committee, so.
I think there's one comment that we probably have to create, this is tentative until Tim is formally sworn into the board.
Yes.
Obviously, they're all open public meetings, getting attended, participate, but until he's sworn into the board, he can't formally be a committee member, but we can, we can put those as placeholders.
Correct.
That's good.
Then any motion to approve?
It's moved.
Second.
Matt and Joe, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. On the 7.4, we will have Bill Manazzi come up and talk to us about the 2019, 2020 budget update. Bill Manazzi.
Good evening again. Included in your school board packet and also on the screen, you will find the monthly budget update. From what I can gather, the school board is familiar with this report, and I like this report. So I see no reason to really jump in and make any major changes to the monthly budget update at this time. Over time, hopefully, we can continue to beef up some of the fund balance bervidge on the bottom with our changeover to Skyworks Software System. And I know that is as exciting as it sounds in conversation. I'm just hearing it as I'm saying it. There you go.
I think it's great. Yeah, the accountants and the accountant, they get enough.
So these are the actual revenue expenditures in the general fund as of December 31st, 2019, so halfway through the fiscal year 2019-20. So as we all know, the fiscal year started on July 1st, and we are halfway through the fiscal year or over halfway now, but the information you're seeing in front of you is halfway through the fiscal year. So just by way of orientation, the green column is the most recently approved school board budget. And just a point of clarification here, that does say fiscal '20 revised budget. Going forward, I will change that with, to say fiscal '20 or fiscal '21 or '22 budget. Until the point that we do have a revised budget, and then you'll see the revised budget. It's just a little bit confusing, but just for our purposes tonight, know that the revenue total in the general fund of $100.4 million and the expenditure total of $99.2 million is reflective of the adopted or the preliminary budget that the board approved last June 24th. So just some clarification there. Overall, the results that I'm seeing here are reasonable and expected when compared to the prior year and the second prior year. On the revenue side, we have received 41.25% of our $100.4 million general fund revenue budget. And on the expenditure side, we have received, or spent, 37.9% of our general fund expenditure budget in $99.28 million. Really, the main variances from budget and from prior year that I see at this point have to do with the expenditure side, the first two line items, salary and wages and employee benefits. You'll see this year, we have spent 36.3% in the salary and wages line compared to 41.4% last year and 37.1% or 37.2% compared to 42.5% last year. The variance from prior year really has to do with contract settlements that have been settled, but the retro pay not processed at that point. So as I mentioned in school board finance before this meeting, my expectation is that when that retro pay is processed in March and we look at the budget update as of the end of three quarters, you'll see that more inaccurate representation of the prior year and the second prior year. And then finally, on the bottom, you'll see some information on fund balance. And I do need to update the last page related to the previous agenda item, the land sale. I have December 2019. Clearly, we're looking in January. Other than that, you can see the unassigned fund balance is projected to grow slightly from where we started the fiscal year, so not at fund balance policy, school board approved fund balance policy yet, but certainly trending in the right direction as you heard from Matt from KDD last month. So I'll take any questions that you have on the budget update.
This is a very minor thing that I, we used to do that I found helpful. There used to be the column in green with the current year budget. Depending on the time of the year, sometime we'd have one right next to it in blue, which was the next year's budget as that was being built. It just helped us look ahead a little bit more. It's a very nice to have, so not to keep piling on you in the first couple weeks, but I don't know, Mike, that was before your time, was it? Yeah, I mean, I found it nice because you could look at, okay, that's what a contract settlement looks like in the second year. And it helps you always be looking ahead. Like I said, very nice to have. Angela, you were here for that. Did you find that valuable, or?
Yeah, I don't know if we need it monthly, but maybe every.
Just maybe as the budget's being built or somewhat. Yeah, yeah, not every month, but it was just something nice I liked.
Do we do that annually or do that in two-year cycles? Because I could see in the second year of a legislative biennial, it would be easier to.
Yeah.
Or, I'm sorry, the first year would be easier to do because the funding has been set in essence for two years, where, boy, when you're crossing over from one legislative biennial to the other, you're making so many assumptions that it.
Right.
It becomes much less accurate.
Right, and part of it also, I think, sometimes it was a look forward and sometimes it was a look back until the audit, how were we tracking on last year's audit while we're still looking at current. So just, just a thought, I know, Sarah, if you have any old reports from two, three years ago.
Sure.
But I get your point, yeah, and you're making a lot of assumptions as to what the next legislature's gonna do. It becomes not all that valuable if it's not valid.
And Angela's point, I know, you know, Bill's digging into really fiscal '21 and even beyond. I think that came out of the Finance Committee, but, you know, periodically sharing that one way or the other is totally reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just pointing out that, you know, sometimes there's far more assumptions that are unknown. Sometimes it's pretty well narrowed down and you kind of know what it will be. And so, yeah, we'll just, we'll try to find a way where we can communicate that and even some, somehow the, maybe the degree of variability depending where we are in terms of state funding cycles. Thank you. Yeah, good point.
Any other thoughts for Bill?
I'd just say so far in his 11 days with us, he's done a pretty good job, so. We're thrilled to have him. He's, he's doing great work and he's been a nice addition to the team. And so look forward to continuing to work with him.
Do you recommend that we stay for another month? At least another 11, 12 days.
I didn't show up this one, we'll see.
We'll see how the next 11 days go.
I don't tell him he's on double secret.
He's, he's doing a fantastic job and we're, I think we're very fortunate to have about our team, so.
Thanks for saying that. Appreciate that.
I want some great news, so keep it going.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, so we are going to jump down to nine, other. And I just had one thing that I wanted to, to talk about, and I'm sure that this will be a recognition at a future meeting, but today that there are two teachers from Shakopee that are candidates, are candidates for Teacher of the Year in Minnesota out of 134 candidates. And they are both elementary teachers, Sheila Matsky. From Sunpat. She is a special ed teacher there. And Rachel Swigert, who is a young scholar specialist at Sweeney and at Jackson. So we wish them, wish them good luck. The announcement will be made on May 3rd, so I know they have some additional with them. I think they have to turn in and we wish them the best of luck representing Shakopee. So any other items that need to fall under the category of other, the catch-all?
Well, I would say, I mean, it's up there on the calendar, right? This is a dual appreciation week, first and, first of all, for.
We'll get to that.
Okay.
If there isn't anything else, we'll do committee reports and Matt will start you.
Well, it's a dual recognition week. We didn't have a formal committee meeting, but, so first of all, paraprofessionals who make our schools work every day and are incredibly close with our students and help make our teachers more effective and just make everything better, want to definitely thank them and appreciate their work each and every day. And then this is actually a committee report since it's the High School League, and I'm the liaison to the High School League. This is Thank You Coach/Advisor Week. We have so many people who are active in our co-curriculars, whether it be high-profile, high-athlete, you know, like football coach or hockey coach or something like that, or one-act play or something where there's dozens of kids or anything, right? Science Olympia, we have so many kids who are connected through those opportunities. And the time and the patience that our coaches put in in dealing with the students and the athletes, let alone dealing with us parents who can sometimes get a little over our skis giving, giving the feedback. It's just a thankless job and it's so important. And I know I had an opportunity to spend some time with a former teammate of mine. We talked about the life lessons that were learned in, outside of classroom activities. And it was just so important, and I just can't thank this group enough.
Well said. Tito. That's what I get.
Last Tuesday, we had the organizational meeting for the Southwest Metro Intermediate School District. And I would love to steal an idea from them. And that is equipping our staff in at least the high school and the two middle schools with Narcan. I've seen it work firsthand. And it's, it's an amazing drug. You had somebody who was basically close to death and then, then five minutes later, they're sitting up and talking that, totally with it, but they're at least able to do that. And I know they, I think they pretty much plagiarized Wilmington's policy on their medication policy. You know, I guess I would much rather see our staff with those tools and not ever need it than to have that God forbid.
Is that something that you can do some research on?
Yeah, I'll definitely do some research. I mean, I'm curious, you know, what our SROs have access to and some of those things. And I know, I know the topic has come up before, and some people certainly visit that. And obviously, I'm familiar with what Southwest Metro is doing, and we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, yeah, I just, you know. And then the other thing is they're looking at purchasing that entire complex. Sky County and the CAP Agency, I guess, are gonna be moving into newer facilities.
This is the Valley Green building.
All right, anything else, Paul?
Uh, nope, that's what I have.
All right, Judy?
Facility is met last week, and we have a few things left before South Side is going to be ready, but they're seem to be moving ahead and things are going fine. And I thought maybe even a month, maybe two months, we'll be finished with everything at the high school and we'll release the money we've been hanging on to to make sure that everything is taken care of and it'll be done.
Awesome.
Yeah. So it was a good meeting.
Joe?
We had the Finance Committee meeting prior to the Board meeting tonight. Bill went over everything that we went over, plus we talked about the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee, getting that back up and running. Hopefully, we'll have a meeting in February and every other month after that. Get the, that people who are part of that, get them engaged and give us feedback. Because as I said in the Finance, sometimes we all get in our little bubble, and it's good when other people give us feedback.
One of them, we have the Communications Committee meeting next week, so that'll be the. the kickoff for that committee, first meeting of the year. And then I just would like to give an update on, some of us were at NSBA's conference two weeks ago now. Seems like it was forever ago, but Judy and I were at phase four training, which talked about policy and also about community engagement and the importance of community engagement. And we both commented, we wish we would have had that a year earlier. It was fabulous. There was a lot of great content in that session. And it was very, it was just very well done. So.
It was worth the time.
It was very worth the time. And then we gave presentation, Ashley and Mike, myself and Kelly from Baker Tilly gave a presentation on Friday to probably maybe a dozen individuals in the room. Unfortunately, there was a pending snowstorm and a lot of people got out of Dodge downtown before conference was over. But I thought it went well and we talked about the community survey and why we did it and feedback that we received and how we planned to move forward with it. So I thought that was great. There were a lot of great sessions again.
Tim was there too.
Yep, Tim.
If he gets, if there's nothing more that happens.
That's right.
He's ready to go.
That's right. So anyway, so I just wanted to throw that in there that we participated in that. And again, a lot of great things going on all over the state, different programs and just little nuggets of things picked up from what people are doing. So Julie, do you have anything that you'd like to add tonight?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Don't think so, but thank you for asking.
Bob?
Well, the two of us are getting later this week to work on budget for next year and other things too. So that'll be good. Later than that, we're, in 22 days, our summer catalog comes up.
Oh, summer.
That's a great sign.
Does that mean?
That means it is well built and it will be, the grass will be greening and.
The golf courses will open.
And the golf courses will be open maybe early. I don't know.
Anything else, Bob? Anything else? That's it? Bill?
I'm, I'm good.
Angelica?
Just quickly, on your seven point two, excited to see this finalized, the property sale.
Oh.
See our, our growth starting, I mean, more growth, of course, on that side of Shakopee.
And I, if I could mention, I get to see kind of the behind the scenes work of the city folks, you know, the city planners and others. They do a great job and just kind of working with things. There's so many details that, that are involved with this. I know Judy said it on some of that. And so I applaud our, the city staff. They do great work. And you know, having seen it firsthand behind the scenes, they do a lot of stuff that nobody else sees. It's really, really important to get things like this done. So.
Yeah, when you all of a sudden see a roundabout, you don't realize that, that's years maybe, figuring out if that's the right thing to do and surveying and.
It took years to try it.
Everything else. It's that interesting, to say the least.
It's because you need to eventually exit.
Sarah, do you have anything?
I don't.
Ashley?
No.
No? Tim, is there anything that you would like to share tonight?
Just, you know, the school board training. I felt like I was in school board immersion camp. Phase one, phase two, and then dive right into the annual conference. So it's a great opportunity to learn. Appreciate the opportunity I've been there.
And we appreciate you taking time to participate, even though you're really not an official board member for a couple more weeks. But we look forward to having you and onboard and bring a lot, a lot of valuable knowledge to us.
Well, I would echo kind of Joe talking about, you know, sometimes you get caught in a bubble. And I would applaud the efforts of our board members to continue to do that type of professional development and training. And it does take a team, you know, to, to stay on top of things. And we get out and you hear from other school districts and different things and bring different ideas back and help us to, you know, we're doing a lot of things very, very well, but let's, let's make them even better. So thank you for, you know, just the willingness to do that. And I know that it makes a difference. I know that we operate and we function better as a school district because of it. So thank you.
We will move on to item eight. Mike, did you have anything else that you wanted to add? Judy, what is it?
I do not. I, that was just thanking you. I guess that's all.
So item number 11 is recognition of visitors to the board. I'm not seeing any visitors tonight per se. So we will move on then to upcoming meetings and important dates. So tonight, George mentioned a finance committee meeting. And we already talked a little bit about the paraprofessional appreciation week and the thank you coach advisor week. I think I read something that there are over 20,000 paraprofessionals in the state of Minnesota.
Yeah, there's a lot.
And that's, that's significant. And you're right, they are definitely a major spoke in the wheel that makes this district chair and great assistance to the teachers and administration. So thanks to the, all the paras out there. Some days may not be easy, but we appreciate everything that you do for our students and, and our staff and everyone in the buildings. Because you really do make a difference in the lives of those kids. And just the coaches, I guess I kind of thought about this a little bit yesterday with the passing of Kobe Bryant unexpectedly. And listening to how he had gotten out of basketball but his daughter brought him back in because of her love of the game. And what a tragedy it is that they both lost their lives yesterday. And I guess it kind of goes back to appreciating those opportunities that you may have as a student, even if it was, was apparent or not, that the lessons that you learn sometimes from those coaches, you may not recognize immediately, but it does pay dividends in the long run. We've got a communications meeting next Monday at 4:30. And next week is also school counselor appreciation week. Again, another group of individuals that probably don't get enough recognition. They are a critical part of our district and working with our students and helping them become successful. So it's, you see a counselor, please make sure that you give them a word of thanks. And then we've just got some other committee meetings coming up on the 10th of February of policy before school board work session. The 19th is facilities and 24th is finance and another board meeting. Is it a month?
One more thing I should have said was other. I went to that, is it Community Cafe?
Oh, yeah. World Cafe.
World Cafe. And, and you were there too? It was really interesting. I mean, I learned so much. And these wonderfully charming, intelligent, well-spoken students were there representing our school, but also representing, you know, their background. And they were so great and I learned so much from them. And I don't know what the next step is. I hope there's another step because I didn't feel like a final step.
There is.
Okay. That was great. Fabulous. I recommend it.
Awesome. Anything else? Will we entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Anything else we need to discuss?
We have to vote.
Oh, sorry. We have to vote. Sorry. I haven't, I guess I couldn't wait. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.